All right, so let's open the meeting here for January 19th of 2021. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the governor's order allowing such Zoom meetings. It is also being recorded, but if anybody else is recording it, that's fine. You just need to let us know. Okay, and I'm just gonna ask if people could sign in in the chat again, just so we can have a sign in as we typically do. That would be great. 7 o'clock PM Town Planner's Report.
Okay. After our last meeting, I've had a Zoom meeting on the Griffin Land Trust, which is located off of College Highway with town officials. And the use is still to be determined. We have tomorrow, we have a large Zoom meeting with all departments, police, fire, you know, in regards to the youths. Also, I reviewed all the previous solar information from November of 2019. And so far, we've only had two residents that are interested. So I don't know if the board will have to look at that to see if you really want to change the bylaws just for two people. And also, there's been more talk about the potential owner of Krabby Joe's, which is on Congamon Road. And the one owner has withdrawn his interest. And there's an interest of another potential owner who would like to knock it down, have a restaurant, and have a marina. And the only thing that's, and he was led to believe by the owner that he had a state docking permit, which he does not. And again, the parking is going to be a problem to change the use. You know, the building's been vacant for more than over two years. So there's a lot of hardships along the way that they would have to address. And that would be it. Just a matter of just reviewing the Verizon's proposal, and that will be it.
Okay. 7:05, public comment. Is there anybody who has anything for the planning board that's not on the agenda tonight? Nothing. Okay. Do we have minutes to go over? I sent out the November 10th one earlier today. And then I don't know if there was others that got drafted that I'm not sort of privy to that I can't participate in, but I don't know if people had a chance to look at those. Anybody?
I'm okay.
No comments on them?
Nope.
Okay, are we to take a vote on the November 10th minutes?
Mike, do you know if I was here for that meeting?
November 10th, you were. You showed up a few minutes late, but prior to the Verizon meeting starting.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody was here at that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Marcus Phelps, make a motion to approve the November 10th 2020 minutes.
Richard Utzinger, second that motion.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Dougherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay, Marcus, were there other minutes from meetings that I had to recuse myself for a majority of the meeting so that they're being done by someone else?
We had December 1st, which was tabled from last week. I think a couple of people wanted to look it over. And I believe changes have been made. I submitted my changes quite a while ago. Jessica, did you get your changes put in?
Yeah, that was what was sent in prior to the last meeting.
Okay.
So we have, Megan, we have the minutes adjusted as people wanted.
Yes, you do.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 1st, 2020.
So moved.
We'll do a roll call vote on.
Need a second.
There we go.
Need a second.
I'll second.
David Spina, second. Roll call vote. Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay, is there any other minutes or is that everything?
We're still with minutes. We have December 15th. Let's see. Those were edited, I know, and are they okay with people?
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2020.
So moved.
Approval of minutes moved by Mr. Utzinger, seconded by Mr. Spina. Roll call vote. Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay, the last set of minutes. January 5th, 2021. There was a revised version sent out today, I believe. And did things get adjusted there for the planner's report? I know I had a question about item three. It didn't seem to read well.
Yes, it did.
Okay. Any other comments on January 5th? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 5th, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
No, I need a motion.
No, no, I just have a question. Should these meetings?
Richard, you making the motion to approve the minutes? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January, was it 15th, was it?
5th.
5th, I'm sorry, 5th, thank you.
Right here is second.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Utzinger, seconded by Mr. Spina to approve the minutes of January 5th, 2021. Roll call vote. Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Thank you. That brings us up to date on minutes. Michael, yours. Got it.
Okay. Hold on one second, sorry.
Megan, can you hear me now? I just rebooted everything.
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay.
All right. All right, hold on one second. Let me just
Okay.
Pull up the info we need here.
Megan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Megan, on the trust, on the planning board members' emails and stuff like that, mine isn't correct. I changed mine. And Marcus says it's not correct either. It's missing a letter in it.
Okay.
So when you have a chance, you can just update that. I appreciate it.
What is your email?
Richard.utsinger@gmail.com.
So you're not getting my emails?
No, 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 but when I went over the list of planning board members, maybe I got an old list. You have my old.
Yeah, you changed it when you retired a few months ago, so I can update that.
Yeah, would you please? Okay, then check on Marcus. His isn't correct. He's missing a letter in there someplace.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Sorry, hold on one second. Gotta get all the stuff from Marcus needs here.
Guys, I have to excuse my backup from redoing a room in Florida, waiting for the windows to come in, so you get concrete and fresh strips. Very attractive.
All right. That should be awesome. All right, so we'll go to 7:15. The Verizon cell tower decision. I will turn this over to Marcus Phelps since I have recused myself from this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Let's see, I guess we're close to 7:15. I will just start out by thanking the planning board members for participating in this process that we've had for the application from Verizon for the cell tower, 13 Liberty Lane. And also thank the public for participating in the public hearings, providing information and testimony during the three-month period that we had with several meetings to finally close the hearing at our last meeting. And so now we can proceed with discussing what we've heard and looked at and observed in the field for those who were able to get out. I just wanted to start out by saying that for the record, Marcus Phelps, Richard Utzinger, David Sutton, David Spina, and Jessica Thornton are qualified to deliberate and vote on the special permit application from Cello Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless for a wireless communication facility to be located at 13 Liberty Lane. So my expectation for this time that we'll have tonight is to discuss the material that's been submitted by the applicant and the testimony that was given during the public hearings. Also, everyone has been able to see the material submitted by residents and their legal counsel, which we also have available to use during this deliberation. For the planning board members' information, I did speak with Town Council Attorney Mark Begley on the 13th of January, on the 15th of January, to get an understanding of the procedures to follow in voting and reaching a decision on this particular application. So whatever decision we make, we'll need to address the requirements of both Chapter 185-9 Special Permits and Chapter 185-23.1 Wireless Communications Services District. Whatever decision is made by the planning board will need to be supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record and referring to the requirements of the bylaws. So I'd like to start the discussion by saying that the proposed wireless communication facility that we have under consideration here needs to be looked at in the context of the benefits and costs to the whole community. These would include the need to improve cellphone coverage and add capacity in the southeastern area of town. The level of visual impact of the cell tower. There were two balloon tests, as you recall, that were submitted along with the application. The first one was on March 6th of 2020. That was included in the initial application submittal. Then there was another test on December 18th, 2020. That was the final one that was done and submitted as through an amendment or additional material that Verizon submitted. To the best I could determine, based on the balloon float, the tower would be seasonally visible from 10 residential properties. And based on an analysis of the area where that would be visible, there's 158 properties within the viewing area. And the third consideration is the impact on the market value of homes in the vicinity of the facility. Regards to this, the planning board received information from both perspectives. One, that a cell tower has a negative impact on property values. And on the other side, that property values are not affected by the presence of a cell tower. So that's what we have been able to see or read in the materials that were submitted. The other thing that I'm particularly interested in, and I hope the planning board members had an opportunity to look at the land lease agreement that was made on January 27th, 2020 by the select board with Verizon Wireless. This agreement is a legal document that has been approved by the select board and by Verizon Wireless. Within that document, you can see that there are three forms of income that would accrue to the town if the facility is built. This would be through rental. Also, a certain percentage of the gross sales from other companies that might co-locate on the tower. And finally, tax revenue that would come to the town. It does, there is a clause in there that does require that government approval be received. In other words, federal, state, and local, which means the planning board approval would be needed before anything could be constructed. And it also includes a provision that the facility would be removed after the lease expires. The initial lease is for a 10-year period. And after that, there are two five-year periods that the lease could be extended for. So the total time of lease could be 20 years. And if there's any questions on that, we could discuss that further. I do have that document available that we can look at through a screen share if needed. But those are some of the things that I thought were important as far as that lease agreement that we should be aware of. Having said these things, I'll pass it along to sort of the other members in order. Richard Utzinger, do you have any comments to offer?
The first comment I have, and it's very basic, if you go into the mission statement of the planning board, it says, let me see if I found it, "to allow the residents to live in a safe and healthy environment." I don't believe that this situation includes that. So just for the time being, that's the only thing I'm gonna say at this point.
Okay, David Sutton, any comment?
Not at the moment.
Okay. David Spina. Oh, you're muted.
I was muted, yep. One thing I think that's probably still weighing on my mind is the, I think I got, there was a clarification email from Alan about the potential extension of the tower afterwards in accordance with federal law and whether or not we could say, whether or not we'd have to approve it. If they want to extend the height, which at least if I do my math right, they would theoretically be able to extend the height beyond what's allowable per the bylaw. And if I understand the interpretation of Alan's email, or if I have the correct interpretation, that would imply that we would not be able to deny a tower that violated the bylaws. So that's probably the one thing that's really weighing on my mind right now.
There was a email we received from Attorney Begley that one of his people had provided some additional comments on that. And the key was in how a condition was written to cover that aspect. In other words, if there was a substantial modification to the tower, then it would not be allowed.
Right, but I think if I read it right, even a insubstantial or less than what's deemed substantial still be enough of an increase that would then put it over the threshold of the limits of the bylaw.
I don't think these are approved. I was under the impression that our approval will be overridden by the federal rules and regs.
There is a possibility of that happening, but again, it is important to know how we would write any condition into an approval.
But even writing it in, Marcus, can we override the federal government? If they say they can do it?
Well, there would, I mean, you would have to argue that it would be a substantial change that would have a detrimental effect on the area. Anyway, I understand that is a concern. Any other issues, David?
Spina? Nope, none others.
Okay. Jessica Thornton.
Evening. Just in response to some of the statements that you made, Marcus, and trying to make sure that we are all on the same page. I would challenge the idea that once finished, the facility will only be visible from 10 residences. To be frank, a balloon that was a third of the size of the potential top of the tower without the additional dimensions and inclusion of the tower, nor the forest station that is planned to occur, that you could say that we would still only be seeing it from 10 potential locations. Additionally, while you and I were out there in person, we could tell that in the the area of the pad itself, there'll be 10 large evergreens cut down from that section alone. And just from my quick count and looking at the tree survey, an additional 21 plus evergreen trees that will be taken away. So when you talk about the amount of clearance that will happen, I think it's important to keep in mind what's actually going to be cleared. So I have a different type of opinion with that. I'm also still concerned about what we're going to consider, I guess, more heavily weighted in our evidence when it comes to property value issues. We have a paid appraisal stating that there would absolutely be no diminution of market value, absolutely no adverse financial effect. But we've heard other testimony stating that there would be actual realtors who are in the business of selling homes. Additionally, the comparables that were provided, those appraisals initially were not comparables. They were $200,000 less in value as well as located in mixed-use zones. The newest appraisal includes a couple of properties that were sold extremely quickly within the neighborhood. I'd like us to keep in mind, though, that currently the stock of available properties everywhere is extremely low. And that to suggest that potential buyers would absolutely be made aware of this potential tower is disingenuous, as some residents in the area still don't know about it. As well as we could assert in our own minds, I think that one, we could presume that no neighbor or selling agent would go out of their way to point out this proposed project to a potential buyer. And these two comparable sales may very well mean that people would be interested in the neighborhood, but I think it's evidence that there are people are exodus-ing, that are actually, they're actually leaving the neighborhood prior to it being built. I also like to point out that the drop service rate that Verizon is asking for us to meet is 0.6%. But when we look at their drop call records, it appears that only one tower that they currently have is giving them a problem. And that tower, when you look at their maps of future proposed coverage, that's a tower that isn't going to be affected by this proposal. So the area that they claim that they have the most problem with service isn't going to be addressed, at least according to the own information that they've provided. That's where I'm at right now.
Okay, let's see. Any other comments from planning board members?
Marcus, I think one thing we need to look at is, as a planning board, we basically are an employee of the town of Southwick, and we work for the people that live there. I think we need to take into consideration the feeling of all the people in the area. I haven't heard anybody from the area saying they'd love to have that tower in their backyard. I've heard a lot of negatives, but no positives. So my concern is, they voted us in to do what's right for the town. And I feel if we allow this tower to go in, we are not doing what the majority of the people in that area, as I can tell, or maybe all the people in the area are expecting us to do.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other comments from planning board members. The key here is to, I guess, understand as we would go forward on an initial vote on the application is the potential impact. Depending on how things go, we do need to have a vote initially so that a decision, a written decision can be prepared. And the written decision is going to have to contain findings that specifically support the decision. And that's very important if it's going to substantially substantially justify the decision and also, uh, legally stand up. So, uh, that is where we are. For information of the board, uh, approval of the application requires a super majority of vote. So in this case, four of the five members of the board need to vote in the affirmative to approve the application. And, and approval can, uh, include conditions. So in the past, when there has been approval, uh, there have usually been at least six to 10 conditions that, uh, control what would happen as far as the development as it would go forward. The other option is to vote to deny the application. And if this, in this case, if two of the members, uh, vote in the affirmative to deny the application, then it would be denied because we need a four to one affirmative to approve it. So Attorney Beglane recommended that, uh, the first vote would be on denial of the application. And so is there a motion to deny the special permit for this wireless communication facility?
I'll make the motion to deny the permit for a wireless communication facility as presented to the board by Verizon.
Is there a second?
Can I officially second?
Yes, you are a voting member.
I would like to second Dick's motion, please.
So a motion is made by Mr. Utzinger, seconded by Mrs. Norton to deny the application of Verizon Wireless. And we proceed to a vote. A yes vote is to deny, a no vote is not to deny. So it'll be a roll call vote. Marcus Phelps, no.
Richard Utzinger, yes.
David Sutton, yes.
Dave Spina, yes.
Jessica Thornton, yes.
Thank you. So on this vote, the application for a special permit, site plan approval at thirteen Liberty Lane is denied. Uh, we will move forward with preparing the decision, which, uh, will be voted on in peace, uh, as we proceed at the next meeting. Alan, uh, will help prepare some of the material as far as the, uh, procedural history. And then I'll need people who voted to deny it to prepare findings. And those will be, it will need to be linked to some of the, uh, bylaw, either chapter one eighty-five nine, as I mentioned, or chapter one eighty-five twenty-three point one. Any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you very much. I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Marcus. Mr. Doherty, if I may, just for one quick moment?
Uh, sure. Yep. I'll leave it back in Marcus's hands.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Phelps. Just on behalf of Verizon Wireless, we want to thank the board and the town, specifically Megan and Alan, for all their help and time put into this project, as well as the abutters and residents for participating. Um, we would like specifically to ask the board members at this time to preserve any notes, either handwritten, electronic, or otherwise, that you may have had that would become a part of this public record uh, for future use. And so we would just ask at this time that, uh, you preserve those documents and provide them to the town uh, so that they can be preserved as a part of the record, particularly if they were used in reference to your comments here tonight. So again, thank you all for your time and we wish the town the best of luck.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, uh, for passing it to me. I can pass it back to you.
All right. And I'll just, um, uh, just, um, I suppose this meeting I may have involvement in the minutes because this is not going to be a substantial part of it, but, um, um, to address what Mike Fenton said, we'll make sure that that gets put into the minutes so that there's a written, um, you know, hold request out there so that, I mean, you can certainly submit a letter or anything if you want, but, uh, you know, we'll make sure it gets into the minutes, um, and that you'll have something writing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay. Next on the agenda, is this solar bylaw discussion. Um, so let me just set out sort of what got us here. We can talk more about it. And I want it to be more of a general discussion about the bylaw. You know, I mean, if you have other issues with it, they can certainly be raised, but the reason why it got put on the agenda was there were, I think, two property owners who have relatively large properties that are in, um, the residential zone. And Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's R forty, right?
That's, yes, it is.
Okay. And, um, you know, the, the large ground mounted solar is not allowed in the R forty. Um, and so what they've sort of asked of us is, you know, say, hey, listen, I appreciate that we're in the R forty, but, um, it, it's, it's, we have property where, um, if we can, we can sit and we can, uh, uh, put in large solar arrays that are completely hidden from, uh, other property owners from the road, um, no one would know it's there. Um, and, uh, it really would have no impact whatsoever on, um, you know, the abutters or anybody in the neighborhood. And so that we'd be allowed to do that, wouldn't that be a better use than say, you know, uh, selling it to a developer and having the land, uh, developed? Um, and not that there's only, you know, not that it's a black and white question between develop or, um, solar, um, there's certainly other, um, alternatives and developing may not even be reasonable depending on the, you know, topography and other conditions with the, with the property, but, um, it, you know, the idea that whether large residential properties, and I think we, we talked about it before. My memory is that I think at most there was like, say a hundred properties in the R forty that met, you know, uh, twenty acre or thirty acre criteria. I forget what we used, but you know.
It was a hundred and sixty-six parcels fall into the criteria of, of twenty acres or more.
Okay. And then it went, it was under a hundred when it got to thirty, right? Is that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and so, um, you know, it's not, we're not talking about a substantial amount of properties, um, which, you know, I suppose could cut both ways, whether you bother to change the bylaw for a smaller amount of properties or, you know, you say, well, why not change it? Because it's going to have minimal, you know, um, minimal effect on, on others. Um, so, uh, that's sort of the genesis. Um, and I thought having a discussion about whether you even do it, if you do it, what kind of criteria you put on, you know, size of property, um, screening from neighbors and, and roadways, uh, whether it requires, you know, a whole bunch of trees to be cut down, or whether there's some kind of open area where you can already cite it, uh, without having much of environmental impact, um, you know, things like that. I just, I, I think it's worth discussion about that. Um, and then, as I said, more than happy to have a discussion about other aspects of it. If anybody wants to raise other issues about the solar bylaw, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, um, you know, to consider these every so often. This has been what, seven, eight years, something like that, that this has been in effect. So it's probably worth just seeing how it's played out and whether there's any changes that could be made to it. Um, so anybody have any, uh, you know, initial thoughts, initial questions, comments, uh, from the board?
I do, Mike. Um, I have thirty-eight acres and I was looking into this and I could do it and it'd never be seen from anybody. I don't have three face power on the street. Over a million dollars to get three face power down to my house from Klein Road. So that sort of killed that project real quick. So whoever's looking into it has to understand they need three face power on their street to even have it happen.
And I think we talked about that and that even limited it more. I thought, uh, Alan may have looked into that, but I couldn't, I can't remember.
Um, right. No, we did. That wasn't, that wasn't a governing mem, that was a governing factor also.
Okay. Um, and that, I mean, were we able to figure out how that cut it down as to what number of properties existed afterwards?
No, unfortunately, the, the assessor's department didn't have all those records for that. But what he is, what, what Mr. Utzinger is saying now is, I can just quote, the more, the most recent one was over off of Henry Road and it was going to go on Sam West Road. And they had, they had proposals. They're actually in the correct zone, the IR zone. And they were led, they were led along and it turned out it was going to cost them a substantial amount of money to run power into that. And so that, that's, that's one of the biggest limiting factors. Our solar farm, each, each, we have, tech, technically we have three of them right now. We have, we have one in Peady Hills Road and then we have two of them on Volkswagen Road. And each one of those, they had to run in their own power to support those and and as the time went on and it cost more money for them, but, you know, they pursued with that.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, you know, listen, I don't know the economics of it. I really, I, I just don't, I don't, I haven't looked into it and I don't know whether it's even economically feasible for the two that have approached us. Um, and maybe that rules it out. I, I don't, you know, but that's just something that's so unknown that I'm not sure I want to use that as a reason to, to not consider it.
I thi, I think Bob Baker, uh, from the sawmill on Will Palmer, he came in about this. He does have three face power up there because of the sawmill.
Yep.
So that's, so for his point of view, I understand it.
Yep.
And, you know, don't get me wrong, I would like to do it, but, um, not, just not feasible.
Yep.
The second interested party was on College Highway as well. So that was.
And Mr. Grimaldi.
Right?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Bob Grimaldi.
I just, I don't, I don't think tech, technological and fiscal, um, barriers for a potential should be our deciding factor in not to allow it. If that, you know, if, if, if we could, yeah, we're going to allow it, it's an appropriate use. If you have this much acreage and you have this much of a buffer between yourself and your neighbors, but, you know, do you have three face power? Do you want to pay to have three face power? That's, that's not out in the planning board to decide. That's on the person coming to us for an application, right?
Yep. I agree.
I would, I would agree that, uh, the, the parcel size could be significant. Uh, the other aspect is the amount of, uh, vegetation that would be cleared, need to be cleared. Uh, some towns have run into issues with, uh, large forested areas being clear cut so that, uh, these, uh, solar panel uh, operations could be put into solar operations. The other thing is, uh, looking at some policy guidance for regulating solar energy systems that came out, came out of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, uh, March two fourteen, two thousand fourteen, they talked about small, medium and large scale ground mounted. And our bylaw only talks about, I believe, small and large. I don't know. Alan, do you know any of the background on why we went with two categories instead of three?
Yes, um, when we, when we were, uh, Roz Carey and myself, as well as the subcommittee was formed to look at all the parcels throughout town. And we had to go through the process of, it was, there was a petition that went to the select board. The select board asked us if we wanted to go with it. We told them that we would go with it. Then we had to go through, they have, uh, a couple of public hearings. And at the public hearings, the middle section of the town, you know, west of College Highway, which is, which is all R forty, there was a lot about pouring people who live in the R forty, a lot of them, that's where a lot of the, um, there's horse farms, gentleman farmers. And there was a lot of opposition on their pack that they did not want to see or be derived by these larger, larger ones. And then at the time, there was a, we had, we had gotten a couple of information where we did allow up to a thousand square feet to be on the ground. But again, it had to follow the, the bylaws aside setbacks, the front setbacks. And there's no restriction on putting solar on buildings. In fact, we had a couple where a couple of gentlemen, they have large barns and they were able to install quite large facilities on top of their barns or house as well as supplement, you know, what would be on the ground. And that, that's the, the subcommittee based on their, um, the public hearings. And then it also went to a, has to go to a town vote. And it was voted at town, town vote. There's a lot of, it goes a lot of outpourings and that's why the, the solar bylaw is written the way it is right now. I think Doug, my Doug was the chairman at the time and Roz, Roz spearheaded it and, um, put together the package that we have existing right now. We, we looked at, we looked at other towns and saw a lot of other towns, especially on the Hilly Mountain towns, they allow them to go down to like two to three acres because of the topography, which, um, you know, Blanford, I know, has recently been trying to get their solar bylaw passed because a lot of people feel they're an eyesore. At the time, the one, the one being, the one that's on Route fifty-seven going towards Springfield was going up. And I think a lot of that had influence on what people were going to see on a daily basis.
Seems to be, uh, the Blanford bylaw has passed and I would certainly recommend, uh, reaching out to those people and getting a copy of that bylaw because, uh, they, they ended up putting a moratorium on solar because they were kind of overwhelmed. And then they, uh, utilized Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to prepare a draft which, uh, ran, you know, went through public hearings and I believe it was passed at town meeting. So that may be one that's quite current and up to date.
I believe there's a big solar farm on Chester Road in Blanford. You can see as you go on the right-hand side, heading toward Chester. But I, I think it's in Blanford, the huge solar farm on the side of the hill on the right-hand side. Also, there's also one up, um, in Chester, I believe, on Middlefield Road. There's a huge one up there beside the highway.
So I mean, where are people at? Where they're, are they thinking that this is something worth discussing? Or are they thinking that it's just not appropriate for this zone, that the zone should control, you know, over, over any specific conditions that you could apply?
I think the town people brought up the question that looking to do it. We should at least, uh, look into it and see, not because of what, you know, but I think we should have come up with a size and setbacks and visual, stuff like that, but at least, I mean, if they have the interest in it, I think we should at least address it for it, whether we approve it or not. We should at least address our issue.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth looking at. And I think as long as there, you know, things we should consider is like the, the size of the parcel, how much buffering, we've just spent a lot of time talking about, you know, potential eyesores, what people would see from their yards. I think the same thing applies here. And then, then the other thing is, you know, maybe some kind of a clearing limitation or something like that. So that, you know, we're not, you know, they're cutting forests to put up solar panels. Or at least encourage.
Just to give, just to give the board an example, the three solar sites that we have in place, they average anywhere from twenty-two to They average anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-four acres. In order to sustain the money that they want to pull in. So that's why we had looked at, we had looked at. Over, over forty, over thirty, over twenty, and then we even looked down lower.
That's where we may need to put in a new category, a medium sized that would fit on a. Twenty-five acre parcel or whatever. You know, and still have enough room to. To buffer and. Screen. The installation. Alan, you may want to look at. Under Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section Three. It talks about no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate. The installation of solar energy systems, et cetera, et cetera. But I guess we've still got enough areas within the IR and the B zone that we haven't been challenged. You know, on that requirement in the Mass General Law. But I certainly would say be worthwhile looking at something to expand. Because apparently there's continued interest in solar energy.
Technology is going to keep rapidly moving forward. Pretty soon they're not going to need three phase. If able to push it back through a two-phase system. They're going to start coming up with new concepts and designs on how to make the panels and where to place them. Over in Europe, they're already making roads out of solar panels. It's coming. You already got their own, our own state where they want to reduce our emissions by twenty thirty-five and zero by twenty fifty. Solar is going to be coming. Technology has a long way.
It froze up, Dave.
Go. Hopefully in the next few years, it's going to study that, that. That seems to be a biggie with everybody is what these things look like when you drive down the country road and all of a sudden you see this big shiny field. There's a lot to talk about.
David, are they getting to where they can? Have, I don't know what you would say, smaller. Units or smaller installations that'll generate still the same amount of power?
Doing it, right now they're actively doing it with sidewalks over in Europe. Especially in Germany, he's got a lot of it where the sidewalks are all solar panels. And it, it looks pretty good. It, it, it does. But then again, they're also making roads out of recyclable plastic. Which we're not.
But we just put new sidewalks for Marcus's house. We can't carry them all.
My, my uncle, my uncle Gino Baldarelli. He was a tireman. He, he did tiring in Pennsylvania. He decided to stick with the state because he knew that they were constantly.
Freezing up, Dave.
Replacing top forever. So that's, we're slow to change. But it's coming. What, Mike?
I said you were freezing up a little bit there.
Well, that's my, my lovely cell service in Southwick.
You're asking for one, Dave. All right, so. What, Alan, what size are Mr. Baker, Mr. Grimaldi's properties?
Uh, they're both, I mean, in the sixty acre parcels. Mr. Grimaldi's. Um, it's just to give them an idea is right across from the hash house on the opposite side of the, from the hash house. He's got like a large field, so that one is going to be pretty visible from College Highway. Mr. Baker is the same thing. He. He's off, off of Will Palmer Road. And the thing is, his land slopes from the. South to the north. So he's going to have to clear more because. The optimal area is to be south, southwest. So he would have to clear a lot more trees in order to recap. The proper solar. Energy that he wants. So he's on, if you pardon the expression, he's actually bucking the grade. A little bit to do that, but he has. A lot of land. It's heavily treated.
My memory though is that he had some. He had like his area that he's developed and then there was some screening and then there was an opening in the back. Was that his?
That, that was his, but in a. Um, primarily, I think he was looking to try to get it. As close to his logging business as possible.
Right.
And help, to help on the cost of lumbering.
Okay. Well, then I guess what we should probably do is come prepared for the next meeting. With. Specific conditions or criteria to sort of start working with. And see if we can come up with something and then we can kind of have something on, in writing to. Talk about and vote on or, you know, do whatever.
Well, can we get a, can we get a copy of the Blanford bylaw?
If you look in the chat, Mr. Moblin has been kind enough to. Put in a link to the. To the. Blanford bylaw. I can copy it and send it around in an email as well. But that, you know, eight, section eight is the ground mounted solar, so. I'll send that around. And you guys can take a look at that.
Excellent, excellent.
But, you know, I mean, I, I think of what we talked about here, the, the screening, the. Deforestation, the. You know, think about. Size of property, you know, I mean, is twenty acres enough? Is, is thirty, you need thirty, do you need four? I mean, what, you know, what? I mean, I guess I envision it and you guys can certainly offer other suggestions, but I envision it as having some, there's got to be some set. Bounds. And then within that, you know, there's some discretion that you can kind of work with depending on the property. I mean, I think a lot of these are going to require. Site visits and seeing how something's going to play out. As Alan was talking about, even with the, you know, just the, the slope and, and where you got to get to, to get the proper. You know, solar angle. So I, I think.
Mike.
Yeah.
Again, with technology, they could, they could do photo imaging of the property and impose a solar system on it to show us what it's actually going to look like.
Right. Right. And I, you know, I mean, a lot of it you can kind of play around with now, I think, because they have, I remember one of them. I think it wasn't a large, it was a smaller one, but they, they have ones that rotate, I think, right? That you can.
Yes, they do. They're typically, they're typically been used a lot by individuals.
Right.
It looks like a basketball hoop. And it's got a tractor on it that follows it as the day goes on, rotating it. East, east to west and north to south.
I think there's one on South Long Yard in town already.
Yeah, Almond's got one. My buddy's got one in his backyard. It's pretty cool.
And a lot, a lot of them are down south because they have more. Visibility and temperature. You know, the northeast, as we all know, because we all live here, but. Is a challenge at times because we don't have a lot of sun as Arizona.
And, you know, the other thing to consider, and this is. For this as well as other bylaws as we go forward here. You know, because I'm just looking at a comment from. Kathy Kahoon about will an impact study be done as well? You know, I, I got to look at our bylaw again just to see exactly, I don't think there was a full impact study, but there was. Consideration of environmental impact and things like that that has to be taken into account. But I think, you know, at least working in. The discretion. To retain consultants if necessary at some sort of. You know, and some sort of cost passed on to the applicant. You know, I, I think that's worth starting to. Work into our bylaws so that we have it in there. It's an option. And, you know, we certainly don't have to use it every time, but at least it's there. And, you know, we're not stuck in a position where. You know, we need more information and it's going to be on the, the town's dime if we need to do it. You know, I think things like this, when you're talking about solar or, you know, cell towers or things like that, that have some. Degree of engineering and scientific. You know, detail that you may not pre, privy to. I think the ability to get a consultant in is, is pretty useful. All right, anything else on this before we? Wrap it up for tonight and.
That's good finger up. Don't mean trying to say something?
I, I just have a question. Mike, that's a great point. Do you think that, just to widen that discussion just a little bit, maybe that should be some kind of general bylaw? Under zoning? That, that, that could be in place, like, you're right, with wireless, there was potential that could have been use of a consultant. Solar, there could have been a use of consultant. Perhaps an even a larger commercial development that were to come in to, in town. That we're not a hundred percent counting on, on what we see in front of us and you really would like to bring in a consultant. You know, maybe that's a thought to, just to put out there as a potential. And maybe it has to go to town, to the town attorney to, to look at, to see if that's even legal to do, but it seems like it's not an unreasonable request. And, and I don't know what the thresholds would be, like, obviously someone wants to do an A and R lot, you know, that would be burdensome to, to impose some kind of engineering study. But if, if it was some, under some portion of the special permit. Process. Maybe that's where it would go if there was a special permit involved that you would have the ability to. To select a firm to, to. To analyze another proposal from another firm just to fact check it and get feedback from it. Like, you know, if there was something with a cell tower, I don't want to pick on a particular application, but a cell tower application and. You know, there was some questions back and forth around. Some of the engineering. Well, that would have been a great place if, if the town could have brought somebody in, right? Or, or the solar piece. You know?
Yeah, no, I.
Might be a wider discussion, right? Because you're right, this is a great opportunity where you'd want to do this, but there's plenty of other places where maybe you might want that elsewhere too.
Yeah, no, and that's fair. And I, maybe, you know, I don't know the answer to whether it needs to be. Somewhat contained into the, you know, specific. Bylaw or whether there could be a general one. I mean, it is in the marijuana one, I believe. I think, right? Didn't that get worked in there?
But that's what I mean. I think it might have got worked in there. It's under subdivision control law. I don't know if it's either under, under chapter three fifteen or if it's one eighty-five, but I know you have the right under that to retain a firm. But you know what I mean? But it's not, it, it's like newer bylaws have it and older ones don't. And now, so someone's going to come in. You know, this is an opportunity perhaps to look at that and say, maybe this should be a special permit criterion that you have the right to do that.
No, maybe I'll take the language from, you know, either three fifteen or marijuana one and shoot it over to Mark Begley and just say, hey, you know, if we did this as a. As a general bylaw, would that be? You know, we, you could certainly talk more about the language, but just as an idea, is that, is that something that is acceptable and will it pass muster?
Sure.
Yeah, it seems like it would fit well under one eighty-five nine, the special permits, because that's where. You know, we're really looking at making decisions and, and conditioning things. So if we have. Engineering advice, it helps. The other, just quickly, we're talking about bylaws. The governor signed an economic development bill. That included a portion. Related to zoning and zoning bylaws is my understanding. Can now be passed by a majority vote rather than a two-thirds vote. I don't know, Alan, did you hear anything on that?
No, I haven't, but I have a question for. You're taught that the consultants would be paid for by the developer interested in putting the solar. Because that could be a, a big cost. That I know the select board would be interested in, as it is. You know, we're going to, we're going to be talking about it. But again, when we have to advertise it. When we did advertise it. The, the applicants paid for all the costs, the legal costs. We reviewed everything and took it from there, but. It depends on how involved the, the select board wants to give money to pursue that. And I think.
I think we, I think we would want to. Have, you know, have it written and it probably is that the. Applicant pays for the consultant independently.
Correct.
Well, that's why I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I know, Alan, you're absolutely right. And as a selectman, yeah, I, I, I almost scared myself. Right now, I'm not advocating that the planning board now go expend. Tremendous amounts of money on consultants, on proposals that in front of the, the, the board. But like under the subdivision control one. They escrow them, you get three quotes, you escrow the money and you, you do it. Right? And they, they actually, developer actually pays for it, but it's through the town. They escrow the money, the town pays, the third party develop, the third party reviewer. Right? So that it is unbiased, even though it's paid for by the developer, they're not paying that contractor directly. It's paid for by the town. And so you do get an objective look at it. Because the town is the one doing the hiring. And that would, Marcus is right, probably under one eighty-five nine it would go. And on the solar piece and, and then I'll let everybody go because it's been, I know it's been a long day and. You know, I think obviously the, the best use of solar is. On everyone's roof and to have roofs covered in solar because they're up above, they're up high, you can't see them. It, it's less, you know, it's already impervious, right? So it's all of those things going for it, right? But in some of these. Larger parcels, there is opportunity for. For ground mount and it just needs to be, you know, it, it just was worth a look. There was a couple of people that asked about it. But in anything, and you know, I think Jessica touched on it a little bit and she's right, you can't look at any singular one piece and try to craft bylaws to get, you know, a singular one done. So, you know, I, I, I feel for the Grimaldi guys and. The gentleman on Will Palmer and, and those, you know, those guys are in. In the situation that they would, that we would be looking at, but you can't look at it. On, you know, those two, it's got to be more broad based and just. Whatever the criterion is going to be, right? So I appreciate you guys taking a look at it based on that. And it, it's smart. It's smart to take a look at a bylaw that's been on the books for what it's coming up on ten years or eight or nine years. And Dave's right, the, you know, the densities of the solar panels are getting so much better that you get so much more bang for your buck. Now than five years ago, they're going to get thirty percent more efficient five years from now, so. You know, ideally it would be all on roofs, but it's not completely practical at this point, so you're still going to have ground mount. And, and the other way to look at it for me is it's, it's. It's a derivative of agriculture, right? It's because it's mostly open farmland that's getting converted and. It's ag, you're just farming the sun. That's, yeah, it's not as pretty as sunflowers, but that's what you're doing. Right? So that's, that's how it kind of has to be looked at.
Well, except for the, except for the visibility part, right? I mean.
I get it, but I mean, some people, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's people that hate looking at cornfields too, right? And they don't want, you know what I mean? Hey, you get a big enough crowd, right? You'll find one. And I, and I get that part, but that's really what, it's not straight ag use. I knew I could get Dave to laugh if I worked hard enough, but it's not a straight ag use, but I look at it almost in that regard, like you look off of Congamon Road. Old tobacco fields, that's now. They're farming the sun, that, you know, the, the former crops not really viable as, as an income source anymore. And so, there you go. And, and it's more productive, you know. Impervious aside for a minute, if you can manage the, the runoff. But the, you, you get more produ, production out of the land than you would, especially to what Alan said in New England. Where, you know, you get three months a year to grow something on stuff around here in New England. You get, you know. Ten or eleven months to grow stuff out, you know, to farm the sun, even though it's not as effectual in the winter, it's still better than zero, so.
And my work's pretty good in the winter.
Yeah, well, the last few winters we had where we haven't had any snow sitting on them, but. You know, it's just, you know, the angles of the sun and everything else. I'm sure you see your numbers are way down in the winter. I see the ones from my work where, you know. They put, you know, we put well over a million dollars worth of solar on the roof of our building and. Off of Hudson Drive there, but. You know, and you can't see it. That's a great use. And I'd love to see more parking lots covered. You know, if the people have a large employee parking lot that they built. Covering over that and put solar on top of that. It shields the vehicles during the bad weather and in the summer to keep them cooler and. Snow off of them and then, then they're solar generating versus taking a, you know, a raw field and put solar on it. I get that, but that's, it's still a, a use. And then the other is, the other thing to consider is the alternative use of the land, right? We've seen a lot of farmland converted to residential use. We've seen golf courses converted to residential use. We've seen a lot of property converted. Well, if this, this prevents that and that's, you know, an idea as one way to slow. Residential growth, if that's what, as a planning board you want to plan for. Well, you can enable alternative use of the land that enables it to continue to produce something. Rather than it being sold off for, for residential development. So that's, that's, and that's the yin and the yang. You've got to, you, you as the planning board, that's why you're, you know. So that's, that's, and that's the yin and the yang, you've got to, you, you as the planning board, that's why you're, you know, that's why we have the planning board to weigh those things and, and, and set forth policy like that, and it is, it becomes a policy decision, do you want residential growth, or do you, would you rather have, you know, I guess you could say, you know, pretty solar panels, farming the sun, I, your call. But I, you know, again, I just wanted to thank you guys for taking a look at it, like I said, I, I had come in with a couple of people that were interested in it, and, and, and Chairman Darty was nice enough to humor me at the time, and now that we're past the other thing that has been weighing on us, uh, you know, you're, you've got some time to take a look at it.
All right, um, so yeah, let's, let's focus on the next meeting, um, considering sort of criteria and, you know, sketching out what something would look like. I sent out the, the Blanford one to everybody, you can take a look at that, um, and, um, you know, we'll go from there. All right. Megan, what are our next few, couple meetings? Do you have the, you have the schedule in front of you or no?
I, I have it in front of me.
We have February 2nd.
Yep.
And February 23rd.
And what's after that?
I don't have them written down.
March 9th and March 30th.
Coronavirus anniversary.
Is there? All right.
February 2nd, we're going to need time to, uh, prepare, or to review the decision on the cell tower and to have the final votes on that. That'll take possibly a while, I don't, hopefully, uh, people can get the decision prepared by that meeting.
We do. Could I just bring something to your attention? I know, um, Verizon is going to be a stickler on, you know, our denial, we're going to need hard facts that we can take out of our, um, chapter 185, something that pertains exactly to that, and written to match exactly that, you can't really, you can't really, um, freeboard it, you know, they're going to be very particular about why it was denied. If you have a weak, if you have your decision and it's very weak, um, they will tear it apart, so it has, you have to really look at, look at the bylaw and look to see what can be put down, and it can be referred to, uh, on, in the, in the, um, in the bylaw, you know, with, whether it be A, B, C, subsection C, because that's what, that's what attorneys do. You know, they're, well, Michael knows for fact.
In the end, I think.
I was going to say something, but I had to be careful. They go in fact.
All right, so here's, I'm just trying to, um, I'm trying to see what.
I'd say a half hour at the next meeting for the decision.
Well, here's my issue that I'm trying to figure out, and I think, does anybody have an issue moving the next meeting to the 9th? And, and actually, it'll give you a little more time to get that written decision circulated.
Are you guys okay on the shot clock?
That's what I, I, I.
We have 90 days from January 3rd.
90 days from January 3rd?
90 days, 90 days for the close of the hearing, is what the terminology.
Yeah.
But isn't there, isn't there a clock that starts at the beginning that?
No, not, not, now that you already had your meeting, and you closed the hearing, and now you, you were deliberating for a decision, the 90 days start the day that that meeting was closed.
So the first shot clock from, from start to finish only went through the end of the hearing, it didn't go through the decision? Okay, I just couldn't.
Correct, and the decision has to be filed within 90 days, not voted on by the planning board, it has to be recorded in the town clerk's office.
That's correct.
Days.
So from the 3rd, so that's 28 days in January, 28, that's.
Or I'm sorry, I take it back, it was the last meet, it was January 5th, right? Was our last meeting.
Or 5th, so.
Correct.
The 5th, I'm sorry.
28, so 54 plus 31, so you got, you got until, um, into, into April, um, to do that.
I hope, I, I don't think it's going, the decision to deny is going to be a lot easier, well, not easier, more technical than the one to approve with conditions.
Right, so, um, do you guys have any issue moving the meeting from the 2nd to the 9th? And it's my issue, I didn't catch it at the time we did the schedule, but that is actually my daughter's birthday, and I don't know why I missed the fact that that was on there. But if you.
And now that's recorded for all of prosperity, you heal.
Um, but if it's possible to move.
I don't think Megan or I have any problem trying to figure out why you didn't notice that, do we?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we don't have, we don't have the problem with reserving a room to be no conflict.
Yeah, right, exactly. I thought I moved, I, I'm looking back, and I thought we moved it to the 23rd, and was going to move that one to the 9th, but I, I, I must have not put that in an email, but I think I actually did think about it at the time, not to be fair to me.
I'm fine with it.
Never got moved. And I can, you know, we'll certainly send it out and make sure that the Verizon people and residents know that it's, it's going off one more, because I think on the agenda, it indicated February 2nd. But, you know, I don't think that that's anything that you can still move it at that point in time.
I wouldn't tell Verizon why, Mike.
You what?
I wouldn't tell Verizon why we have.
Oh, I, you know, maybe it doesn't matter to me, but, um, um, so, all right, so let's, um, that's the only change that I think needs to be made, is from the 2nd to the 9th, um, and then we can just keep going with the two weeks, and you'll have plenty of time, um, you know, uh, to do the decision. So, you think about half an hour, Marcus, is that what I heard?
Well, if, if we, yeah, I would think if the boilerplate stuff is put together, you know, by Alan in the office, the procedural history and all that, and the decision language, which is pretty straightforward. The key is that the board members that voted to deny it need to, as Alan says, provide some specific reference to the bylaw and to the record of the public hearing to connect those together and say, you know, it, it did not meet, meet our standards, our criteria, whatever. Um, as Alan said, it just can't be general, it has to be very specific, as substantive and, you know, as possible.
So why don't we put, um, I would put that on for like 7:10 or something, I, we're, we're we're running through the town planners report pretty quickly, and since there's no public comments, we end up getting a little dead time there, so maybe just start it like at 7:10, for the Verizon, and then why don't we put the solar discussion on there for, uh, why don't we say 7:30, and then if we have to, you know, if it goes a little farther, then it goes a little farther, um. Does anybody have any interest in putting something, anything else on there?
Well, after tomorrow's Zoom meeting with the proposed applicant for Griffin Land Trust, I may have a lot more information to supply to the. You know, it's a 90-acre parcel, so there.
I mean, that's, you know, actually, why don't we, um, why don't you put on for, 7, just put it on at 7:45, even though it may take longer, obviously, for the solar, put on at 7:45, um, a discussion for a, uh, a, a general consultant bylaw. Why don't we get that moving?
Maybe, and I recommend maybe the board, the easier, easiest ones to get to would be off of Congamon Road. There is a dirt road that walks around it, but it's very flat walking, and you can get an idea of what a 22-acre solar layout is, and, and then there's one behind that, but just look at the one um, that actually faces Congamon Road. The other one, there's a little bit of wetlands that you have to go through, and it's a little more strenuous to get into, but this one here is pretty, pretty easy to look at, to just, just to get a ballpark figure of what, of what one looks like at 20 acres.
If you can see through all that vegetation that they've nicely maintained in front of it.
Yes, yes. Michael, why I have you on before we hang up, did you have a chance to look at the budget, because it's due, it's due on the 20th?
That is next on my list, and I have a.
Due Friday, and, and the finance committee is on the warpath. As you know.
I've already got, I've already gotten a call from a gentleman on the finance committee.
Mike, your daughter's birthday would be the last thing you'd have to worry about at that point.
Mike, Mike, how much are you going to put in there for our consultants?
Uh, well, hopefully nothing, because we'll have the bylaw to let everybody else pay for it, um. So, I, I looked at it, I'm fine, I mean, it's, it is what it is, um, we don't really use it a heck of a lot, uh, anyways, um.
I did put, I did put capital.
Correct.
Capital inputs in for the master plan again, and Marcus.
I wanted to make sure and see people wanted to, um, to do that, um.
I updated that, Alan, did you use the, uh, 1.6? I think you used the 1.621.
Yeah, but I went, I went up to 85, 85,000, because once, once you have to advertise and you have to do all the administration for it, we don't want to be having to go back to the select board to ask for a few thousand dollars here or there.
So, so you did what per year?
85,000.
Total 85?
For each, over two years.
85 over two years?
85 for each year.
For each year?
85.
170,000.
Correct. You had, you had six, you had 60 each year for two years at 120.
I thought we asked for, what did we ask for last year? Was it like?
I, I had 35,000 each year for two years. So that was a total of 70, because we just adopted the Open Space Recreation Plan, which has a lot of baseline, baseline information, and if we ask for CPA money from housing, we could get the housing portion of the plan written, and we just have it, we just, uh, had a ADA plan paid for by the town, so we've got like two current plans. Uh, yeah, I guess 70 is not enough, I would say maybe 85 or 90 total, 45 possibly per fiscal year, but, you know, you got to ask.
You want to get a substantial, you want to get a substantial and a current master plan that has graphics in it. The last one that was done was really kind of a cartoon, the one, because all it was is a questionnaire, and that questionnaire really didn't do anything at all, help the town out at all.
Oh, no, that was just, yeah, that was just the initial survey, uh, beginning process, yeah.
It was basically what we referred to as a cartoon.
Yeah, 25, 24 years ago. So the master plan is now 54 years old. Our, our officially adopted master plan, which we don't refer to very often.
Have we achieved it yet?
Probably, I think David, uh, yeah, we have, we've achieved all those goals.
Everybody picks on it, but a lot of stuff that was in that master plan and, and thoughts from it came to fruition, rail trail, flex rez.
Indoor plumbing.
Yeah, I'm not talking about from when you were a kid there, but, easy.
And also, Mike, why I have you on, I do fold, um, they're also looking for the annual report, which we've sent, I did a preliminary budget and sent it to you, and Megan has helped me hempeck you to also doing the annual report. She's very good.
I will, um.
She has practice.
We'll get one in this year, right? We'll have one in our, on the, uh, this year.
Why did we not do one last year?
There was not one in the, uh, document last year.
Well, you're the one who read it, so, um, I don't think anybody else did.
So we had one, but there was no picture.
There was nothing.
Wait a second, let me get the picture of the planning board right now, hold on, smile. Gotcha.
There you go.
Even Joe's cow, there you go.
The, the budget one is right now the most pressing, followed by the, the annual report.
So you're saying, Alan, you're saying $85,000 per year for two years?
Correct.
Wow.
Because the last, the last, when we went out and we had that consultant come in, oh, I want to say four or five years ago, she had, she'd even used a larger number than that, because um, there's nobody in the town hall that has the technical expertise to do the graphics and to do the layout, so most, most of these are construct, are, are engineering firms, planning firms that, that do this.
I mean, I guess I would say, I don't, I, I don't know what it would be, um, I do take Marcus's point, you know, that, that there's parts of it that have been done, and you can sort of co-op that and, and put that into a master plan, and you've cut down some of your work, um. But, you know, I think if you ask 85, you'll get approximately 32 seconds of discussion at the, at the finance committee meeting, um, before they deny it. I think when you're down a little bit closer, you at least get some discussion before they deny it, which is really all I'm shooting for, um. So, I, you know, what did we, Alan, what did we do last year? What number? I thought it was like 40 or 50.
We did, and, uh, it was, it was, it was turned down.
No, but it was a hundred grand.
What number was it last year?
Um, I, I don't have that with me right now, Mike.
Okay.
I, I would take that number and buy it by, split it in half and spread it over two fiscal years, because.
Yeah, but we did, we did last year.
Takes two years to do a master plan.
I'm pretty sure we spread it out over two years last year.
Okay.
And I just don't remember what the numbers turned out to be, and I, I had in my mind, it was like 50 and 50 for 100 total over two years.
That's good.
But, um, you know, I just don't, and when that's a no, I'm not sure after a pandemic, asking for 85, and 85 is going to get you anywhere, um.
Well, if you ask for 85 and they give you 50, you've accomplished your goal. I've always been told, always been told to ask for more because you will, things will get cut down.
I can't hear you, Alan, I, I was, no, I can't hear you, you're breaking up.
That's a tough strategy, that's a tough strategy.
I, I, I kind of thought that's where he was going, but we'll see, you know, and that's also, you know, we have, we do have to find a way to find that money, I mean, if it's, and if it doesn't come out of, at some point, it's got to either be a, you know, some kind of competitive grant or some other way, you know, there are some, we do have a new senator that we have to make some requests to soon, so that's one of the things that probably should be a topic of discussion.
Well, and my idea too is to go to CPA for the housing component, and that's been done in other communities. Uh, housing needs to have some strategy to go forward, a lot of times their money just sits there until they need storm windows or shingles on a roof.
Well, there's, and there's a lot going on right now at that, at the state level, in the, the stuff that was just passed, too. And Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor have been very vocal about uh, certain changes to state law around chapter 40 to, or 40A about housing, I think you're right, Marcus, I think you alluded to the change in the voting, I didn't see that that had passed, so I'll have to look and see if that did happen. Because that was a big hurdle, right, the two-thirds at a town meeting, the change of zoning bylaw, that's, that's the same votes you need to get to bond, you know, to bond money, so if they lower that to a majority, that's a, a much lower threshold to get if you need to do something for zoning. I'll have to look into that to see if that passed, I didn't, I don't recall it.
I think it was in the economic development one he signed.
I know, he, but he has, he has so many pressers now with all this COVID and everything else going on, it's hard to parse it all, so I haven't seen it. And this weekend, um, nobody took, took it from the planning board, but this week is Mass Municipal, and, uh, there is. And this weekend, um, nobody took, took it from the planning board, but this week is Mass Municipal, and, uh, there is one, um, the Mass Municipal Conference. It's usually in Boston. That now is gonna be from my bunker on Zoom. Um, a bit, and they're gonna have a couple of breakout sessions on zoning. I'll make sure that someone that's at that from the town goes to that.
Yes. So what do we got for a number? We gotta get some kind of number in there.
I go with fifty thousand both in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three for a total of a hundred.
Thoughts?
I won't be here anyway.
Yes, you will.
Never retire.
We still have those pictures, Alan. Make us get them out.
Um, everybody okay with fifty and fifty?
Yeah, you gotta start someplace.
All right. But let's do that, Alan. Um, the rest of the budget looks fine.
So you, so you can change, yeah, you, so, okay, you just want Megan to go ahead and.
Did send it to me, not you. Um, yeah, Megan, if you wanna just change that.
Okay.
Um, and the rest was, the rest.
Megan's doing a great job for me.
Um, I, I mean, I'll ask Alan, I'll ask you or Megan. I mean, I didn't see anything else that required much adjustment based on, what we had done in the past, but if you see something that you're.
Yeah, basically, they asked for a flat, a flat increase, a five percent decrease.
Right.
And, um, we've been staying consistent over the past four or five years.
Right, I didn't see.
One time we asked for a new file drawer.
Right, and I didn't see us needing to move money from one to the other to kind of compensate in any way. I thought it, it was pretty evenly, you know, properly split.
Yeah, no, we're trying to be conservative.
Um, okay, all right. Um, so let's do that. That'd be great, Megan, if you could get that. And I'll get you the, um, little summary for the, um, when is the thing due, uh, for the, um, for the town report?
Megan, do you know, do you know that? I don't, I don't have all that here.
No, I don't know.
Just, I'll just gotta get to it this week, and if, um, for some reason, you know, you're starting to get bugged about it, just let me know. Um, or if you find the deadline, just let me know.
Okay.
And I'll get it done before that, but I'll try to get it done this week.
Great.
Uh, I'll just write, we did the Verizon cell tower, and that's about it. Um, okay, um, anything else we need to talk about? All right, Mr. Sutton.
Close the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second from Marcus Phelps.
Or do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Hutter, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.